Welcome everyone to tonight's very special meeting in Greenville City Council. Great to have you with us as it always is the case. This time, please rise for invocation, Dr. Stephen Claburn, Earl Street Baptist Church. Yes, thank you, Dr. Claburn. Please remain standing for the police honor guard. Post the colors. May be seated. Appreciate members of the youth commission for participating in the ceremony this evening as well. This time I'll call on the clerk council Camilla Pittman, who will deliver the administration of the oath of office. Thank you, and thank you to our clerk. We do have a few former members of city council here, I think perhaps, actually, is it anybody elected officials here, former, former officials? Thought some people. Who we have here. Everybody's got a mask on, so I can't help you, huh? Please stand. Is that Jill? Very good. And we have the chairman of the water commission, Ms. Bill Kilgore, is here with us. Keep an eye on everybody. And I want to thank the the family members who are here tonight. If you come more often, I think we'd have even better discussions if we had everybody with their family sitting reconciled, that would be a, especially Will. But thank you everyone being here. I just a brief comments, as it says in here comments, it's kind of like a homily, I guess. I just want to reflect on on something. These terrific people who the voters of the city green will send to serve on city council. That's what it's all about, that's what it's been about for a long time, but first and foremost, to thank the voters who who make, I think, very good decisions and who they send to city council. And it's an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to have these folks as my colleagues, and I think the whole community is proud of of every one of them, so give them all a hand of applause for. Just want to comment that last week, I had an opportunity to travel in the Midwest, and I was a guest in a, let's just say, I'm not going to give away the name of the city, but it's a very large Midwestern sub-American city you all know about, and a very successful city, a city that would be on anybody's honestly top 10 list, maybe top 5 list of successful cities that have strong economies and are doing all the right things. But what I saw up close and personal, and I was being hosted by folks who really were very engaged in that community, were some very troubling things, actually. What I saw in their downtown core, and I'm just going to mainly address that, is that I saw deep scars from from the year 2020, in terms of boarded up buildings in the center of town still. Graffiti on the walls and just some general disarray still there. Very troubling to the people there who worked hard to accomplish so much, but there it was. They had a lot of talk about offices in their downtown. They have many office towers, much bigger than Greenville, and a lot of them are pretty empty right now. Now, a lot of that's COVID and people, things are different, things will change. But the fact is, they've got a serious problem now in their office environment, which of course means there's fewer people on the street at lunchtime to support the small businesses that still remain. A lot of those small businesses, by the way, were actually shuttered, you could see it for yourself, really since since COVID. The residential downtown, people who had chosen to live in their downtown, they were very proud of. They said, there's no question about it, you can see it at nighttime when the lights don't come on in the residential. And for the first time in 20 years, they said, you're seeing more people leaving their center city than coming back in. I say all this because in every one of those prime indicators, if you will, that's not Greenville. That's not Greenville. We are taking a very different path, and I think we're so close to it that perhaps we don't see how divergent our city is, other cities in South Carolina, and in the region, and even nationally. But we are, we're in a very much stronger position. We don't have our scars to be shown. We went through 2020 with not a broken window in the entire downtown. We came out of it with a lot of talk of reconciliation, a lot of good practical hard work being done by a lot of people to make sure things are different in Greenville. We we come out of it with our office and office environment in downtown Greenville, hear me on this, in a stronger position than we were two years ago, significantly stronger. The residential, well, speaks for itself. Where are all these people coming from, you know, but they're still coming into downtown, we're going all around, so we're seeing people come here. And the other thing I think we can value and hold up as something we should be proud of is our green space and parks. That people during the worst of COVID, I mean during the worst of COVID, March, April in 2020, people started coming into downtown Greenville to experience the walkability, the parks, the green space, Falls Park, and we all had to deal with the issues of what do we do when so many people are actually coming back to downtown Greenville. And even then, I would confess that I kind of thought maybe that was happening in cities across, no, it was not. People were leaving and during that era, and they were not coming back, and they certainly weren't choosing to come back to the center cities. People did in Greenville, South Carolina, and still do, so it's something really to be proud of. The former mayor of the city asked me if during COVID, we had to scramble like they did to try to to try to create something that they called, you know, some outside dining experiences. Said, no, we already had outside dining experiences, they just carried on in Greenville, South Carolina. So he thought that was a great observation. And then finally, while so much of this country is so divided and so polarized, as it unfortunately is, in Greenville, this spring, we're opening a new park, and it's called Unity Park. That's a very different situation which you find around the country. So these are a lot of things to be very proud of. But I think one thing we all have in common on this on this council is we really have an appreciation of how we got here and why we're here. Every one of us went through political campaigns, we knocked on doors, we talked to people. And I think we would all agree, it's extraordinary what the residents of this city say and do, and how they feel about things. And I don't mind telling anyone, I believe we are a perfect reflection of the people who live in the city of Greenville. I can't even explain exactly why, maybe it's in the water or something like that, Mr. Kilgore. People seem to want to take a different tack to do things differently, so they care about the green space, they care about the civility, care about a sense of unity in our community that we want to make happen. And it's shown again and again, in election season after election season, and every time we have this ceremony called the swearing in of our officers. So we see it, feel it, we believe it. I want to thank again all the residents for making it possible and for giving us this great city council. Thank you. We at this time have a very brief city council meeting to attend to, beginning with the clerk calling the roll.
Councilmember John Dewarke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Braxington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
There.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor White.
Here. At the minutes of November 22nd, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. They are not. One quick communication that is very, very important to, if it's the title right, I want to recognize Angie Prosser for a magnificent award, Angie, stand up and take your mask off for a second. Last week's conference in Greenville, that was the 76th Annual Conference, and she attended every one of them. Recreation and Parks Association, South Carolina Parks and Recreation Association, presented her with the highest achievement honor that they have in their association, the Robert Reed Lifetime Achievement Award. I'm very proud of that. Since Angie's always in charge of events, I know she hated the fact that she couldn't be in charge of this event. Sneaked up on her, congratulations. Okay, we have a presentation from this manager.
Yes, Mayor, we've got the annual audit report. We have Ken Meadows from Green Penny and Matty for to represent that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of your Office of Management and Budget to introduce Ken Meadows with the term of Green Penny, our external auditors. Before Ken comes up and delivers the messages, want to provide a few opening comments. Each year required by state law and accounting best practices, we prepare financial reports to report to the citizens and our investors on the financial condition of the city of Greenville. For over 30 years, the city of Greenville has chosen to prepare a comprehensive financial report with additional detail, supplemental information, and statistics above and beyond legal requirement. Many of those documents have been prepared by Ms. Karen Crawford, who's here tonight. She is our deputy OMB director and one of the true unsung heroes of the city of Greenville. And so this information you're about to hear tonight is due largely to the work of Karen and her staff of accountants, Laura, Angie, Chrissy, Stuart, Connor. So I want to thank them for all their hard work, and thank Mr. Meadows, Keith Campbell, and Emily Poole from Green Penny for all of their work in putting together this information. And with that, I'll have Ken come up and deliver the report.
I'm Ken Meadows, I'm partner with Green Penny, it was our pleasure to audit the city of Greenville again this year. We appreciate being of service to y'all, so I'll go ahead and launch into the presentation here. I know y'all have got more important things to do tonight, so I'll cover this fairly rapidly. If y'all have got questions on stuff I go, please stop me and ask me. You'll see for the past fiscal year, the fund balance increased $16.3 million to about $50 million at the June 30th, '21. Of that $50 million, $12 million of that has been assigned by city council for future expenditures, and that leaves about $38 million unassigned, which is about 39% of actual expenditures and transfers out. The city has a policy to have a minimum unassigned fund balance of 20%, which would be about $20.5 million. So with your unassigned fund balance of almost $38 million, you're about $17.4 million above the required minimum. Just to remind you, you've committed since year end about $9 million of that for the purchase of the floor building, and so that, about $8.4 million of that remains. Flipping over to the revenues, give you a quick overview of the revenues. Revenues for the year were $97.5 million for the year. You'll see most of that comes from property taxes, about $46 million. Got about $45 million from licenses, permits, and franchise fees. That's an increase in total revenues of about $4.5 million from the prior year. Most of that was an increase in licenses, permits, and franchise fees of about $3.7 million. And then you've got about, close to a million dollars increased in property taxes. Compared to budget, revenues came in above budget by about $10 million. Once again, most of that was due to higher licenses, permits, and franchise fees, about $9.2 million, and also higher property taxes, so about $1.4 million. Looking at general fund expenditures, general fund expenditures were $84.5 million for the fiscal year. You'll see most of that is, goes to the police, the majority of, not the majority, but the most of it, $26.8 million, $15.6 million to fire, and then $12.2 million to public works. Comparing it the prior year, expenditures increased $3.5 million from the prior year. Most of that was a $1.3 million increase in fire and police, and then the rest was kind of spread over most of the remaining categories. Expenditures were $1.7 million, or $7.1 million under budget, so expenditures came in under budget. And you'll see there what makes up most of that. Capital outlay was under budget by about $2.6 million, mainly due to the timing of expenditures. The planning and development department was $1.1 million under budget, mainly due to the the timing for the land management ordinance and the work related to that. Expenses had been appropriated in the budget, but they hadn't been spent a year in. And then fire, public works, and police were under budget by about $1.4 million. Looking at the general fund, you also had transfers in this year of about $15.8 million. You had $9 million coming from the ARPA funds, the American Recovery Act. And that was about $9 million for revenue replacement, and so that went to the general fund, so that was a large contributor to the increase in fund balance this year. Transfers out this year were about $13.8 million. You'll see $7.5 million of that went to capital projects, $3.6 million went to solid waste, $2 million to housing, and then about $800,000 to cover debt service. Looking over to the, looking at some of your other significant governmental funds, you'll see capital projects fund had a fund balance of almost $52 million at the end of the year. That's a decrease of $17.6 million from the prior year, and that was mainly due to the timing of expenditures related to Unity Park construction. Hospitality Tax Fund had a fund balance of $7.1 million. That's an increase of $1.1 million from the prior year, and you'll see. And you'll see of that $7.1 million, $6 million is restricted for tourism-related expenditures. Of that, y'all appropriated in October $2 million for the Swamp Rabbit Trail bridges, and that leaves about $4 million restricted for tourism-related expenditures. So that basically gives you a real brief overview of the funds and for the city of Greenville. We also conducted a single audit this year, and we covered three programs, normally we only recover one, but y'all, city of Greenville is fortunate enough to receive funds under the American Rescue Plan Act that need to be audited, that was the $9 million. We also received, the city received funds under the coronavirus relief fund, so we also audited that as well, and then we had the highway planning and construction that you'll receive funds under. So all of those, we looked at all through, through those programs, everything looked fine there, we had no findings. Overall, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted either in the compliance with those programs or internal controls overall. So everything looked good, Karen and Matt, they, they do a good job in the accounting for the city, so. The management letter, you've got that, and you've received that, there's really nothing there that I would call your attention to, so that's fairly routine. And so just flipping over, just to remind you, you know, just talking about the audit, if you look at the audit opinion, we provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct, so just bear in mind, it's not absolute assurance, we don't audit every transaction. We may do a sampling, may do analytical procedures and things like that. And it's also not a forensic audit, people hear audit, and they think that you're here to conduct a forensic audit, it's really just to make sure that the financial statements are materially correct. And we issued an unmodified opinion, there were no modifications necessary, that's the best opinion, that's the one the city usually gets. So just in summary, got an unmodified opinion, and the city at June 30th is in healthy financial condition.
Thank you very much, we appreciate our good, strong finance staff, and for those who are with us, special guests today, are in good financial condition, but I want to also point out that I believe we remain, the city remains the only city in South Carolina with a triple A bond rating from all the bonding agencies, which is an incredible independent assessment of our financial condition.
That's a question, do we plan this so we could just get this captive audience to see how good, we're good as shit?
It's a captive audience, we said it with an audit report, everybody headed to the doors.
Need to make sure, no tax increases, hey.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know if y'all remember, but 15 months ago at the retreat, Matt showed us the COVID L chart. Which was protection of what was going to happen, and we are seeing the COVID V chart, and I think Matt and your staff, thank you. Grateful for the work y'all have done to keep us in, in budget and in tow, thank you.
Kudos.
We have the consent agenda up next, do I have a motion in a second on the consent agenda?
Second.
Councilmember Dewarcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular agenda, 15A, first reading.
An ordinance to appropriate $1.5 million from the capital projects fund economic development project account to the Greenville Local Development Corporation. And further reference of an established loan program for major economic development projects to appropriate an amended and restated grant agreement between the city of Greenville and the Greenville Local Development Corporation and matters related thereto.
Second. Your second, Roll Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, appreciate you guys giving me this opportunity tonight, just want to bring you this, this, this to your attention, just to make sure we're all closing the loop and being on the same page. The GLDC has an established fund that is used to limit temporary financing of major economic development projects, whereas such projects can be expected to stimulate additional private investments. In this instance, the city has been presented with a unique opportunity to assist in the establishment of an innovation district to be located with one or more existing downtown offices. And in anticipation of that, we, we anticipate that it will continue to promote the growth of existing city business, as well as serve as a catalyst for new startups, both of which will result in the creation of new, well-paying, knowledge economy jobs, which include the technical, engineering, and software development fields. And we anticipate that to increase the occupancy of the existing downtown office space and expansion of the city's tax base. And I'm, can take questions at this time.
Now clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Dewarcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance providing a one-time cost of living adjustment for persons currently receiving benefits under the firefighter's pension fund.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Dewarcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye, thank you very much. 16A.
A resolution to certify 660 South Main Street as an abandoned building site.
Motion, please.
Second.
This is the Army Navy store site, I believe it is.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First, aye's have it.
Couple of things, Mayor, I would like to share with council both on the project and just regular initiative front, some really good work going on across the city. Mayor, in his earlier remarks, referenced the great work at Unity Park, and progress is continuing rapidly out there and keeping us on track for substantial completion. Late spring of next year, we're starting to think about planning the opening for that, make sure that we kick it off with a, with a great grand opening. If you've been out there recently, Rich Brothers arrived this week to begin installation of the oral bridge decking structure, so you can see a lot of progress there. Playground and splash pad continues, welcome center is, is nearing completion, and you may have noticed a temporary construction trailer installed on site, that's going to be our short-term home for maintenance in the park, it's going to be a big effort out there, so continue to plan for a long-term maintenance facility, park in the months to come. I know an item of very much importance to city council and our citizens here in Greenville is pedestrian safety. I'm happy to report that we have selected a firm to help us with preparing a citywide pedestrian safety study at StanTech, you're probably familiar with them, they've been doing great work on the Augusta Street project for us. So we're excited to, to add them to that project and look forward to working with the neighborhoods in the coming months to prepare that pedestrian safety plan. Nickel Town Community Center hosted a community meeting facilitated by Habitat for Humanity. During that meeting, Duke Energy announced the donation of $100,000 to Habitat Greenville's Habitat and Heritage Hills, an affordable housing initiative in Nickel Town, so we appreciate Duke Energy's contribution towards that project, Nickel Town. We've been downtown, obviously noise is an ongoing challenge for us, so thanks for our communications department and mayor's continuous feedback on downtown and noise, we've come up with a new noise ordinance and let it shop in peace campaign, so look out for that, remind people to, to the noise regulations. Public Works Department, sidewalks on Haywood Road are complete. Everybody has a great interest in the Swamp Rabbit Trail project, you'll recall several months ago, we came to council with the recommendation to take over the administration of the installation of the bridges, I'm happy to report that the piles for the substructure on the south side of Haywood Road are complete, and the crane is now moving to the other side of the road, so we're actually seeing progress on that project with the goal for completion by the end of 2022, so that's exciting. Paving on Perry Avenue is underway, and North Markley Street is scheduled to begin this week. I do want to recognize a really hardworking team in Public Works, this is a difficult time and leaf season, and they've done yeoman's work on picking up over 1.5 million pounds of leaves. They worked last week, Monday through Saturday to stay on schedule, so thank you Clint, to you and your team for that. And we've also installed some equipment for smart school zones, this will allow for remote monitoring and control of all school zones within the city using advanced intelligence software, so we're excited about that, that will help us automate that and have quicker response. And finally, the Greenville City Fire Department has begun their annual Operation Santa Claus event, where firefighters donate clothes, toys, and other necessities to children of families who, without our help, not be able to have a Christmas. So I want to leave you on that note, wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you for a great year.
The comments from council member, please.
Yeah, well, get a, the praise to Clint Link and the Public Works team for the leaf pickup, I think the Brazington residents is responsible for 0.5 of the 1.5 million leaves, or so it seems. But getting aside, I wanted just to thank the city manager, deputy city manager, all involved as it pertains to the pedestrian safety audit being prepared. Specifically, what I think was referenced as Appendix A, the all-important inclusion of streets in school zones that council had asked for, and I was very pleased to see that built into the scope of work, so thank you very much for that.
I want to recognize the Boy Scout group that's here, et cetera, because I know I have several of them in, in my district, so if y'all could please stand. And I just wanted to let y'all know that Will and I helped open the Sphinx Bridge over there, when they finally, when they finally opened the other side.
First across.
So I came, then we started acting as if we were in charge of cutting rivers, it's exciting, beautiful.
First ones on the scene, anybody else?
Okay. They want to eat. Great donation to affordable housing in Nickel Town, if you're anything else out there, or anybody else out there who wants to donate some money, if we can, please advocate and ask them as much as possible, because we need as much, much help with affordable housing in the city as possible.
I know we did not get to this room as quickly as we did without a lot of work from some staff, and I just want to say it's good to be home, and thank you for the beautiful decorations. I, I don't have a tree this year because I can't fight supply chain stuff, but you managed to get it, Melissa, I very much appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, like for all being here with the reception at the hotel, you said, tonight, okay, thank you very much. Merry Christmas.